The writing is provided by Sonoma Paint Center located at 815 West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonopapaintcenter.com. And Larbury Automotive located at 181555 Sonoma Highway. For more information, you can go to larbryauto.com.
I would like to reconvene the June 19th meeting of the Sonoma City Council. Let's see, I would like to invite Gavin Lahine up to the podium, a student from Sonoma Valley High School, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Gavin. You might notice that we have a special group today, but we are not introducing them just yet. I do not have a report on closed session today. The next item is approval of the agenda. Still getting used to this section, so.
Just one item on Section 4.4, Item 4.4, which is on the agenda. This is to adopt a resolution to award a contract for our 2017 street rehabilitation. If council is comfortable moving this forward, we would just ask that you move it forward and make the acceptance and the award of the bid contingent on your approval of the budget, which will happen later in the agenda. So whoever moves a consent calendar, if you could just make that statement and then we can go ahead and take care of it on consent calendar. But we do need the acceptance and the award of the bid to be contingent on budget approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute. Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, unless otherwise permitted by the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name.
Good evening. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street here in Sonoma. I actually wrote down my comments this evening. Hey neighbors. Join with us my partners, Richard Silver and Earl Blue, for its time for a legal medicinal cannabis facility in the city of Sonoma. This council took up this issue May 20th, 2009, when I was the Sonoma mayor. Unfortunately, I took the advice of our city attorney, Tom Curry, and recused myself. The result was a two to two vote and the matter went unresolved. A very big mistake on my part. There was a conflict if the council was deciding on the company to run the cannabis facility, but we were voting on the creation of the planning commission and their plan on locations. There was no conflict. I slept at the radio station for a while. A very big error on the advice I received from the city attorney. Time, the council, and voters have changed. The voters of Sonoma have passed by a large majority the concept of medicinal cannabis. The voters have spoken. It is time to place a Sonoma dispensary on this council's agenda. We will be in this year's 4th of July parade and I openly ask the public to join us and support us. See you there.
Thank you.
Michelle Ritchie, R-I-C-H-E-Y, 215 East Watmo. And I guess you guys have heard about the Village Green One. Those are the apartments right behind Safeway on Fourth Street West. This 41-unit complex has been sold. List price was 9.5 million. One of the selling points was that rents haven't changed for years and could be easily raised. Forty-one units. I prefer not to think of them as units. They're people. They're seniors, they're couples, they're families. They're probably going to be evicted. Or the rents are going to be raised so high, they're going to be forced to leave. Again and again, we've seen this happen. And when are we going to stop it? We're working hard to get more affordable workforce housing built, but in the meantime, we're going backwards. One step forward and three steps back. So we're allowing our existing affordable housing to disappear. It seems to me that all the developers that are buying here are making a ton of money because we are easy as shooting fish in a barrel. We're the fish. These developers might be adding a few more bucks to their pocket, a few pennies in the city's coffers. But what's it costing us, the workforce, the renters? This could be devastating in some cases. Taking away long-time homes from seniors who will not be able to find another place to live. Built in 1980, this complex would have been covered by rent control. This just might be a good time for us to seriously consider a rent moratorium. Just cause evictions, rent stabilization. How many more people have to get displaced or evicted? And let's not make the mistake of letting any hotel get built and not provide housing. Do not allow that residential component to be waived. We can't afford to go backwards. We're in a housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was clearly aged before beauty. I'm Peter Ho Horse. I live at 4636 Grove Street. And I'm here on behalf of the Sonoma Healthcare District, the Measure E Campaign, and most of all, the employees or the staff at the hospital to thank you for endorsing Measure E, which was successfully passed. And we are, there were many, many reasons why the vote was improved over the two elections, but every little bit helped and thank you very much.
Thank you.
It seems as though we're letting the aged go first.
Your name and address first.
My name is Earl Blue. I live on Broadway, 20680 Broadway. And I've been there for a long, long time. And while I've been there semi-retired for a long, long time, I did different things. For a while, I was driving for Meals on Wheels. And then the senior center, I helped them in the senior departments and so on. So I, and now I'm traveling around a little bit with my daughter, who delivers flowers to the senior development centers all over the place, from Faha to one of the other ones. But anyway, it occurred to me that those folks there, after having been out there in the field with them, the seniors that I'm saying, could use a little help in the area of marijuana. I've been smoking marijuana since I've been 19-years-old and that makes me 105 or something, but anyway. And it's been a medicinal thing, totally. My doctor prescribed it for me. It's helped me tremendously. It's kept me alive all this time. And I want other seniors who are too afraid to talk about this because it's so against the law and not approved of socially, that would benefit all through the valley here if they could, say, develop a co-op. Or somebody could go around and advise them of their rights and the beneficialness of cannabis. So for a social and a program to help the senior citizens be aware of, we need to find out what they really need in that, a needs assessment in that area, using people that can help us find out. Now I am asking the council if they could help me at all. I'm going to go out and do it anyway. But if they could help me at all, get us, somebody from the staff to help organize and do stuff, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Third time's a charm. Heidi Darling, Communications Director for First Street East. I'd actually like to say two things. One is, did somebody just raise the microphone? Because that's brilliant. Thank you for whoever did that. Thank you. I am here to publicly go on record to say that there was a comment made about the First Street East project not liking the hotel business. And that couldn't be further from the truth. It's perhaps not as profitable for the project. In fact, street housing would probably be equal or slightly more profitable. And the First Street East project and this development group in general is a mission-based group and very invested in doing what's best for the community, the entire community. So while that means yes to conservatively-sized homes and conservatively-priced apartments and built to address the range of demographics in Sonoma, it also means not letting go of an opportunity to provide employment, to provide TOT dollars. And it's something that we feel really passionate about. So it's not that we don't like the hotel industry. It's that it may not be as profitable, but we're fully committed to trying to bring mixed-use development to an area, one of the few remaining areas that it can go in. So, you know, it is all about housing, housing, housing. I couldn't agree more. There's a lot of people clamoring for it. There's some people who are willing to invest in it, in not just First Street East, but around Sonoma. And it's also about doing it in the smartest way possible, right? So there's the flip phone and there's the iPhone. And we want to be the iPhone, bringing housing to Sonoma. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Richard Silver. I reside at 95 Bernhard Avenue in Sonoma, often called Federer's Hot Springs. Today's my 71st birthday, which makes me 20-years younger than my companion here, Earl Blue. He's kept, and one year older than Ken. I'd like to speak on the benefits to those of us in what's called affectionately the senior community. But if you live in Portland, Oregon, there is no senior pricing or senior tickets. It's called honored citizens. And I have found, having been in this community only eight months, that there are many of us honored citizens who are thriving here and would like to be able to participate and have a long more time to do so. Part of that means, for many of us and many of our families and friends, that medicinal cannabis can provide a way for us to have a fulfilling and active life. And for the city council, I implore to put this on the agenda and consider the value. Yes, there will be restrictions, regulations, the same way there is on sales of tobacco, alcohol, firearms. The revenues that would come to the city would be extraordinary. The revenues to the county also. And those like yourselves who are entrusted with the overall benefits of all citizens would have additional monies that could be deployed for whatever the council felt was of most need. Whether it's aging, whether it's housing, whether it's parking wreck, whether it's summer programs, the library being opened, et cetera. So I too support having that on an agenda item. And I'm looking at all of you now, much younger than I. And when you get to be my age and when you get to be Earl's age and beyond, I would hope that the city would take a leadership position in making it available to the grandparents and great-grandparents of these nice young people and others under doctor's care or hospice or whatever, that we have the ability to receive or have delivered in the city limits a dispensary. Thank you very much. And happy birthday to all of you who have friends and family that joined me on this day.
Happy birthday, Michael. Happy birthday, Mr. Silver.
Hello. Logan Harvey, 527 Mariana Drive. I speak today in reference to the vote that will be happening on the 22nd with regards to the EIR for the West Napa Street Hotel Project. Housing has been raised multiple times in this meeting. And I think it's extremely important that we do consider this very seriously as things go on. Everyone in this community works hard and we need people that live here and work here, that work here to be able to live here. A teacher with a master's degree, first-year teacher makes $44,500 a year. And that's not the city's fault. That's not something the city has much purview over, right? But we can do things about housing to make that person be able to afford at least a rent an apartment. Currently, a teacher, brand-new teacher, would be very difficult for them to rent a one-bedroom apartment or studio in the city of Sonoma. God forbid, they deserve a two-bedroom apartment. I understand that's way too much to ask for a teacher to have. But for me, I think, to allow a developer to come into the town to build a large revenue grossing hotel and waive a housing requirement, a building permit requirement, is a kind of situation of gross negligence. With regards to the way that it impacts the environment, having people that work in the town, having to drive from Vallejo, from Napa, from Petaluma, from cities further and further away, requires their car to expel more and more carbon dioxide. And as that increases and as people move further away, the more that this town becomes a polluter. We're the second worst polluter in the Sonoma County, second only to Sebastopol. And that's with regards to transportation, because of long-distance transportation. So this is something that we need to consider seriously. This is something that's part of the Sonoma General Plan, Mixed Use Development. This is part of the Climate 2020 Action Plan as far as mixed-use development in city centers and near-transportation routes. And this is also part of the building code. So there's no reason to allow a hotel to be built here without meeting the housing requirements prescribed to it by the building codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Ms. Swanson?
Wendy Swanson, 357 Engler Street.
Brian Kelly, 20,000 Broadway.
So we're here, we are, I'm the Work-Based Learning Coordinator at Sonoma Valley High School. Mr. Kelly is a teacher there. And we, in conjunction with the city of Sonoma and Sonoma Chamber of Commerce and some sponsorship from the Ed Foundation, have created this two-week summer program, the Youth Engagement Seminar. And we have 30 bright-eyed and bushy-tailed students who are part of the program. We started today, it was our first day, and we had a great visit from the city. And we had the fire station and the police station. And then Brian can talk about what he does with the students in the afternoon.
Basically, we're focused on, obviously, community engagement, bringing students closer to the community at large. And that's why we're here tonight, to be able to introduce them to the exciting city council meetings that take place in our town. And then in the evenings, we participate in, or in the afternoons, I always confuse evenings and afternoons. But in the afternoons, we focus on community, obviously, engagement, but high school participation and trying to get them more involved on campus and involved in clubs and activities and to start their own agendas and activism on campus, so.
Yeah, and in the community too. We're trying to get them to have a stronger voice in the community and for them to know a way to get their voice heard. So could we just let them all stand up and we can recognize them?
Sure.
There are 30 total, but a couple of them had to leave already.
And maybe just as we are finishing this item, I do want to thank the school district and the high school. This was an idea that came out of Councilmember Harrington's conversation about how do we do greater youth engagement and youth governance and looking at youth coalition. And the idea of this youth summer camp as a model that is done in other cities and the high school really jumped on board and just launched it and said, "Go. Let's go and make this work." And have turned this around in six weeks. So it's exciting to see great young people here. And really want to thank the high school for being so entrepreneurial. And Wendy and Brian, great job. And it's going to be fun. So say hi as they walk around and we'll be having opportunities for council to get to know them as well.
Could I say one comment? So I just wanted to say to all of you, I was thinking about, a year ago, my daughter's going to be a sophomore in high school. And I was thinking, a year ago, when I was a kid, I would have loved to be on a youth commission, participating in government, coming to meetings like this. Why? Government is so exciting. Campaigns are so exciting. And all of you, as young people, should not think that that is for somebody else or that you have to wait for somebody to pick you. You don't. Each of you, when you're older, if you want to be on a city council in your town, you can do it. It's not that hard. You just have to talk to your friends and neighbors and get people excited and talk about ideas. So I am more than delighted that all of you want to be here. And it may be a little dry. It might not be the most interesting thing ever. But all of you and your futures, if this is something you're interested in, can absolutely not just participate on the side. You can be sitting up here like any one of us. We're all normal people. And I hope that I see you guys, some of you in Sonoma and other cities around the country, doing something like this. Because there is nothing more fun and exciting, I think, than being able to participate as a decision-maker in government. It's so exciting and we can all do it. So I hope to see that in your future. So I'm glad you guys are here.
Thank you all. And as you saw tonight, if you ever have any ideas or something you're concerned about, you can just show up here at any night of a meeting. you can just show up here at any night of a meeting and give public comment, or if you don't want to speak in public, you can send any of us an email, and you can find it on our website. So, next up, we have a presentation. Do we have any dedications tonight? Item 3.1, introduction of Colleen Ferguson, new Public Works Director/City Engineer, and I will hand it over to our city manager.
Great. Well, I'd like to enter, welcome, have Colleen maybe come up to the dais here. And it is truly my pleasure to formally introduce Colleen to the community. Colleen started with us last Wednesday and is spending, lucky to have a couple weeks of transition time with Dan before he retires. And while Dan's leaving big feet, I think we found someone who can come in and pick them up. So Colleen basically is coming to us from the, she's got 25 years of municipal experience. She's coming from the city of Santa Rosa, where she grew her career and took on a lot of increasing responsibility. Most recently, she was the Deputy Director of Capital Projects for the city of Santa Rosa, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects, and specifically, I'll ask her to talk maybe about a project she's really proud of, the downtown renovation of the downtown plaza, because she can speak more coherently about it, but it's a great example of kind of how cities can create things that are powerful and help shape a community. She's got a bachelor's from San Jose, and she's also very involved in the Valley of the Moon Observatory Association, where her, on the Board of Directors, where her father helped put the observatory in, and so has been very involved in Sugarloaf. So not only do we have a wonderful manager, entrepreneur, and seasoned engineer, Colleen also has a great reputation, is a fabulous communicator and a good community builder, and has worked with a lot of nonprofits, and that's part of our world here. So I'm really pleased to have her and happy to welcome her to our organization.
Thank you so much, Kathy. It's a delight to be here, working for Sonoma. This is my fourth day today, and my head is totally spinning, and it's so exciting and fun to learn about the community. I grew up in Petaluma and came to Sonoma to have fun, and so it's a different perspective to get engaged in the community and learn that, to learn about it, not as a place to visit, but a place to stay and work and support, and look forward to working with all of you and working with the community and making, keeping Sonoma a place to love for everyone. As far as the downtown project in Santa Rosa, see, Sonoma has been fortunate to have a downtown plaza from the beginning, and you had the wisdom not to destroy it along the way. But Santa Rosa started with a downtown plaza, and on that basis, actually, from motivation from Correo and Owen stole the county seat from Sonoma with the promise that if you voters, vote to move the county seat from Sonoma to Santa Rosa, we'll dedicate this downtown plaza and a space for a courthouse. And as the newspaper reported at the time, the mule train was dispatched, the records were put onboard, and they headed to Santa Rosa, and the deed was done. So, but, so Santa Rosa started with a downtown plaza that was very basic at first, and then there was a courthouse on the plaza, and then a bigger courthouse on the plaza, and then a road was put through the plaza, and it really divided the plaza and took away that downtown gathering space for the community. And so just this past year, we finished a construction project to put the two sides of the plaza back together. So now Santa Rosa has a square, and because the courthouse was the feature on the square for a long time, it's called Old Courthouse Square. And hopefully, you'll get a chance to come over to Santa Rosa and visit it. It's a much bigger community, so of course it has much different design features than the plaza here in Sonoma, but I'm hopeful it will really bring the community back together in Santa Rosa as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Colleen, thank you. Welcome. And I have seen the plaza. You know, I, for over a year now, I've watched that big wooden wall, and I thought, oh, where do I go? Left, right? Well, it was clearly marked, thank you. But when it opened up, I was amazed. I really, I, you expect the White House down at the end, though, and I know you don't have that, so sorry, but it is just, it's amazing. I'm amazed. I can't wait to go up there and just go there, rather than drive by and turn a left on D, but it's amazing. And if you were part of that, I'm very, well, we're already proud that you're with us, but I'm just amazed that you were part of that.
Well, thank you, and I sure hope you can be there when there's a big event. It's designed as an event space with a lot of people there, so hopefully you can experience that.
And I don't want to belabor this, but the Women's Club, I don't, you'll have to read about that. Actually, at the turn of the century, you know, on our plaza was a jail, cows, stuff. And the Women's Club from the Sonoma Valley actually got in there and planted and put turf in and everything, so they have a lot to do with, you know, how it looks today. Of course, it's evolved a lot, but it would be great. I'll share that history with you, and we'll invite you to come to the Women's Club, and so you can hear about us.
Thank you, and hopefully all the students are listening to the power.
Well, thank you so much. I look forward to working with you. And I did want to make a quick note. Am I right to think that this is Mr. Tagasuki's last meeting with us? Well, I will not make you speak, but just wanted to publicly say thank you for all the things you've done for us. Moving on. I mean, if you want to come speak, you can. Item number four is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything, change the order? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for an action.
I'd just like to state publicly that 4-2, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, but I don't have any financial interest in the chamber.
Thank you.
And maybe just as a point of information, the information on that item, there are three members of our council. It's written within the staff report, three members of our council, their businesses are members, and so that was articulated and outlined within the staff report publicly as well, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 4-1, 4-2, 4-3, and 4-4 of the consent counter.
And do you remember our special instructions, because I already forgot them?
These iPads are hard to pronounce.
Okay, so 4-4, if you, in terms of the budget, if you would approve the budget, but it is contingent on the, the, sorry, you can approve acceptance and award of the bid, but it is contingent on approval of the budget, which is later in the council's agenda.
So on 4-4, approval of the budget would be based on, on the approval of it.
Is there a second? Admissible? All right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank our, the executive director of the chamber, who's here today in case she's needed for everything you've done for us. Item 5.1, discussion, consideration, and possible action on an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to authorize a 20-foot setback rear yard in conjunction with the approval of a use permit allowing a duplex at 488 Harrington Drive. Before I hand this over to our planning director, I wanted to lay out the process, so we'll have our planning director speak first, then we will go to our appellantants, and there will be a 10-minute window for however you want to break that up, and then anything beyond 10 minutes, we'll just have that with the regular public comment. Mr. Goodison?
Thank you, Mayor Henley, and members of the city council. By way of background, in 1998, the Planning Commission approved the application of Harry Carusus for a tentative map that allowed a four-way subdivision of property at the corner of Harrington Drive and Fifth Street West, creating four parcels that, on the north side of Harrington, that back onto properties along La Quinta Lane. These four parcels include the subject property, which is located at the northeast corner of Harrington and Fifth Street West. More recently, at its meeting of April 27th, 2017, the Planning Commission considered an application to develop a duplex of this, on the subject property. Again, the property is located at the northeast corner of Harrington Drive and Fifth Street West. It's the westernmost of the four parcels that were created by that subdivision, and the proposed site plan for the duplex calls for a 20-foot rear yard setback, rather than the 30-foot setback called for the conditions of the subdivision approval. So again, back to that 1998 decision, when the Planning Commission approved that tentative map, it included a condition of approval that required a 30-foot rear yard setback for all primary residences within the subdivision. That was condition of approval number nine. Well, in this application for a duplex, the developer specifically requested that that condition be amended with respect to this lot in order to allow for a 20-foot setback, rather than the 30-foot setback called for in the conditions of approval. After holding a public hearing on the matter, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 2 to approve a use permit for the duplex, to approve a fence-site exception, and to amend the conditions of the Carusus subdivision to allow for a 20-foot rear yard setback, subject to conditions of approval. Subsequently, an appeal was filed by several neighbors, and that appeal is specifically with regard to the allowance for a 20-foot setback, and it calls upon the council to maintain the 30-foot setback as provided for in the Carusus subdivision conditions. Now, just to speak a little bit further about this proposal, on this slide, we can see the property here on Lot 1 of the Carusus subdivision. Again, it's a duplex. It's a one-story structure. It has a north-south alignment with the central garage element between the two units. The structure and the entry porches are oriented towards Fifth Street West. Both units would include three bedrooms and two or two-and-a-half baths, along with a two-car garage. Access to the site would occur off of Harrington Drive along the east side of the lot. The duplex would be set back 20 feet from the north property line, 28 feet from the south property line, and 20 feet from the west property line, with the central garage element set back an additional 16 feet. And this provides a little bit more close-in picture of the duplex and its proposed layout, the preliminary elevation concepts, again, illustrating the one-story structure. To speak a little bit further about how this matter was presented to the Planning Commission with respect to the conditions of the Carusus subdivision, conditions of approval, it was staff's view that the modification of the conditions of the Carusus subdivision to allow for a 20-foot rear yard setback was justified based on several factors. First, as a corner lot, the property is uniquely constrained compared to other lots in the subdivision, since it has a street-side setback in addition to the front and rear yard setbacks. Second, the duplex has been designed, again, as a one-story structure with a ridge height of 16 feet. It does not present any privacy issues, nor, in staff's view, would its mass be imposing in relation to the neighboring property on the north. And for those reasons, staff supported amending the conditions of approval for the Carusus subdivision to allow for a 20-foot rear yard setback on this property with respect to the development of a duplex. And so our recommendation remains consistent with our recommendation to the Planning Commission, and that would be to deny the appeal, thereby upholding the, this is the decision of the Planning Commission to allow this 20-foot setback on the north. And I would just note that whatever action is taken by the council with respect to the appeal tonight, staff would return with an implementing resolution at the next city council meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
David, what are the setbacks on La Quinta, the rear yard setbacks?
Well, La Quinta Lane, just to provide a long-winded answer to that question, is zone medium-density residential, which is a different zoning designation than that of the subject property, which is low-density residential. This subdivision was also approved as a planned development, which allowed for some flexibility in setbacks. And all of that said, you've got rear yard setbacks, as you can see in this slide, of 17 feet to 20 feet.
And then further up, the other developments?
It's pretty consistent.
Pretty consistent. Thank you.
Any further council questions? Right, seeing none, I'm going to take it, or, I guess now I'm going to hand it over to the appellantants. If you're with the group of appellantants, could you raise your hand? I just want to see how many people are here. Okay.
Thank you. I've written down my comments, too. I appreciate your willing to hear us tonight. We don't have ill will, regardless of which way this goes. We're just trying to look after our own interests, I suppose. I'm Dan Monahan, accompanying my wife Lynn. We own a unit of the duplex at 489 La Quinta Lane. We also represent Kathleen Gilmore, who owns the other half of our duplex structure, which lies directly behind and to the north of 480 Harrington Drive. When we, the current owners of the duplexes on La Quinta Lane, bought our houses, our homes, we were aware that development might and almost certainly would occur in the parcels behind us, but we believed a 30-foot setback would be enforced according to zoning ordinance. In April, as you've heard, a variance was given to the developer of that property for a setback of 20 feet. Though unable to appear at the Planning Commission hearing, we have paid our fee for an appeal to be heard at this time and hope for due consideration. The basis for the appeal is with regard to the intention of variances and regarding quality of life. Variances were historically considered when conditions of a property made development according to the standard ordinances difficult. Historically, conditions or desires of the person requesting the variance have been considered irrelevant. Variance is supposed to be granted on the basis of the physical conditions of the property. That this is a corner lot has been mentioned. I think that's part of the understanding of the purchaser at the time, so there's not something unusual about this property. So the variance allowed for the property at 480 Harrington had nothing to do with problems of the property itself, but reflect the desire of the developer to build a larger, more profitable rental unit. The variance given allows a closer setback to the property boundary, infringing on the quality of life of current residents by potentially increasing population density in a low-density area and diminishing privacy, quiet, and degree of visible horizon. It's the argument of the appellantants that the original ordinance required a 30-foot setback precisely with these things in mind. The ordinance would intend to preserve a level of quality of life in the town of Sonoma, which in fact is part of what makes this town an attractive place to live. Most of us can probably think of previously desirable areas to live that have been diminished because of overcrowding, noise, and lack of privacy. Letters from the appellantants and the president of the Buena Vista Gardens Homeowners Association, as well as a petition with 17 signatures from residents of Buena Vista Gardens in favor of retracting the variance, have been provided. The applicants for the variance originally presented an alternative plan with the appropriate 30-foot setback. It is our hope that the council will retract the variance and approve the original alternative plans. The principles of a democracy intend that the more powerful members of society should not be able to override the concerns of other citizens because of their power or larger property size. We, the appellantants, request the variance be reconsidered in light of all these things and be retracted. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for appellantant? Not right now?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. Just know you'll be limited to three minutes, and you can speak one time. All right, any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I will, if, yeah, if anyone has public comments, now would be the time. Yep, so you can come up to the podium, just tell us your name and your address, and then you have three minutes.
Rich Merle, I'm the owner of the property. Any question? 1-912-57th Street.
In question, 19125 Seventh Street East. Want to rebuttal to a couple of things he said. This, this, actually, could I present you guys a picture of what was developed on the lot? That's the fourth lot of the subdivision. Actually, you can build within five feet of the property line. Just not a duplex. So, what's in question here isn't really the duplex. It's the fact that it's 20 feet from the property line. But this is a single-story structure. There's a picture. This is much more imposing. I was trying to keep this low-key, to be honest with you. It's 20 foot away from the property line, but it's only 16 feet high. As to where I could build a three-car garage five feet from the property line, one story, 16-foot high. And it makes no sense to me why they would want that in lieu of a duplex. But so be it. I'm trying to provide some housing for the community. The, I have a construction company with over 100 employees, which nobody can live in Sonoma, no available housing at any price. So, I would rather do that than build a big McMansion, per se, which I could make an immediate profit on. I was looking for a long-term investment. And rebuttal to a couple of things they said in their appeal. They mentioned that they couldn't get equipment in to work on their backyard. I'm not sure if they think that the setback is an easement, so they would have a right to work on their property through my property. I don't believe that's the case without an easement. And why they even brought that up, I have no idea. Then, the La Quinta letter. Well, actually, the gentleman that wrote the La Quinta from the, from the housing, the housing people that grouped together for that, they, he mentioned that it was a two-story structure. Well, actually, it's a one-story structure. So, they were misinformed at best. I'm leaving it up to you guys. I'll build a house, or I'll build a duplex. It matters little to me. It's up to you guys. I'm trying to provide some housing for the community. Maybe not as affordable as it should be, but with the value of the property and what it costs to build around here, it's the best we can do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and inaction. Who wants to start us off?
Mayor Hundley. Would it be out of order if I just made a very quick clarification?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I do want to say, and I hope that there hasn't been any confusion about this in the staff report, that what's at issue is not a variance. The Carusus, the 30-foot setback was imposed as a condition of approval for this four-lot subdivision back in 1998. At that time, the normal setback requirement was 20 feet in the low-density residential zone, just as it is today. So, that condition of approval, in essence, established a greater setback than what the zoning standards at the time allowed for. But modifying that condition, you know, is certainly entirely at the discretion of the city council, whether you want to do that or not. But it is not a variance. It's defined in the development code. Just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrington.
Well, first of all, I recognize that for the property owner and for the neighbors, this is a very serious issue that people invested time and money into. And so, I'm taking your matter very seriously. I drove the property today. I went and looked at the entire neighborhood of Harrington Drive, my namesake, and looked at the property. I drove up Fifth Street West and down Harrington a number of times to look at the property. You know, I think it is really important, and I think the additional housing element is important for our town, but I also think it's really important that we hold fast on the development code and that we don't create a bunch of one-offs, hodgepodge, so that people buy properties speculatively, assuming that we are going to give them variances on things like setbacks, or whether or not they can have a large fence or things like that, that people have got to know that when they buy a property, unless there's some true hardship that we're going to require people to conform to the standards of the development code, and that we're not going to vary from that particularly often, unless there is an individual very compelling reason other than our general need for more housing. So, I'm gonna support the appeal tonight, and I appreciate everyone coming forward. But I just, it's, I don't see, aside from the issue about building more housing, which is important, I don't see a compelling reason to begin to, to create a situation where people always come forward wanting to change the required setbacks and other items required in the development code. And I think that's a slippery slope for the city in general.
Councilmember Edwards.
So, when I look around at the different projects that have been built around Sonoma, and we need to go down Spain Street and a lot of the condos and things that have been built, and they're right up next to each other. And then I go up, when you go up Fifth Street West, La Quinta, I can't think of the names of all the streets, but I've been on all of them and know several people who live actually in La Quinta area as well. And, you know, the backyards are fairly small. But when you think about 20-foot setback and a 17-foot setback, that's, let's call it 40 feet, 37 feet, that's actually pretty nice compared when you go to Friar Creek and some of the other areas, where the houses are right next to each other. And the fact that it's a one-story home, I think that the need for the type of housing, it blends in nicely with the, all of the duplexes that are adjacent. And then you tie in, and then you see the, somebody mentioned the word McMansion. I don't know if it's McMansion up there. But with the poolhouse and the pool and so on, that's something you could probably do on this lot as well. And you could end up with a poolhouse at the back of this property, or you could put a garage at the back of it. That would be probably more intrusive than what's designed here. And just the idea that we do need more housing. And I just believe that this is, Fifth Street West is really a thoroughfare street. Having the Le Veroni property across the street is a real great thing for all of the, all the folks that live on Fifth Street West. And I hope that stays like it is for years. And then when you go, I'm sorry, south of Harrington, you know, we have a UGB discussion coming up for 2020. I would actually love to see the UGB encompass all of that area, all the way down to Napa Road at some point. So, because you're going to see pressure of development in that area as more things are being done. These lots have been vacant forever. And when I saw them go up for sale, I, you know, this is something that I thought maybe it would be duplexes all the way through, which I think would be great, because then you connect it with six units, or maybe even more at some point. But I'm not going to support the appeal. I appreciate the fact that the folks have come forward to make the appeal. But I look at this as, we all have the potential in our properties that, of those that own property, of people building something directly behind us or next to us and so on. I look at this as something that, I have no idea what's happening on Lot Three and Lot Two. But I like this project, and I like the way that it blends in with the homes on La Quinta. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go forward. I'm sorry, David, could I ask for the name of the developer, please? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Oh, Rich Merlo, is the current applicant.
So, I had to keep quiet for just a few minutes because I understand why your neighbors feel a certain way. And if I was a developer, I'd probably approach the city council in the same way you did. It's annoying to have things beget in your way. I mean, that's just the way I feel that, like that. It's just annoying sometimes. But I think you, I hope that there is some, some understanding for your neighbors. You know, Sonoma's changing so fast. It's not you. It's just Sonoma's changing so fast, and a lot of things are happening in this city. So, I just hope you under, you know, you just understand that as, as you move forward with this. You know, I, La Quinta happens to be my favorite street, and I would love to live on it someday. So, I just wanted to let you all know that. It's just, I love that street. Walking precincts there was just wonderful. It's a beautiful area. So, I am going to support this project, and I think for other, for the, what's been mentioned ahead of me. So, I just wanted to let you know.
Councilmember Cook.
I've always said that probably the biggest thing being on a council is when you have an appeal come through. And I know all my colleagues up here, we don't take it lightly. Usually, it means that there's something that is in the gray area. I've heard a lot of people talk about affordable housing in Sonoma, or lack of. And with what Councilmember Harrington said, it is true. You know, people buy things thinking that things, rules are going to exist. You know, maybe there could be a McMansion there instead of a duplex. So, I had to weigh this one through. And normally, as this time, I usually vote with the planning commission, which I will be, so I'll be denying the appeal. But I think it's bringing something that Councilmember Ed, or Vice Mayor Edwards had said, that we need to really look at this as time's going, you know, forward. And I think that our work on council members, on the way that we do planning commissions and commissioners in the future, will help through this process. So, I'll be denying the appeal, but, but do understand.
And even though it looks like we have three votes, I have a question for our planning director. So, can you explain to me again the difference in relationship between a former condition of approval, which was the 1998 30-foot setback, versus how that compares with our development code? And what is the process to change it? Does the city just, we can just change an old condition of approval? Or is that like a finding that the planning commission made when it made this?
Well, the planning commission didn't need to make any particular findings to add that condition. And they didn't need to make any particular findings to remove it because, again, the condition was basically an enhancement, in a way. It did not diminish a setback standard. It increased it from what it had been before. So, that is something that is basically just within the parameters of the planning commission, just as they had the authority in 1998 to impose the condition. To the extent that circumstances may have changed, or to the extent that this project, you know, presents special circumstances, they have the ability, as do you now through this appeal process, one way or the other, to amend those, amend that condition.
And something like this, like with a formally-approved subdivision map, even if we ended up changing the development code, these things would stick and would have to be addressed on a case-by-case basis if someone wanted to comply with the new development code but was against a former condition of approval?
Well, it's usually best to have situations like this in the context of a development like La Quinta Lane, where it's a planned development, and it's understood that there are going to be special setbacks associated with that project. Here, we had basically a normal four-lot subdivision. And placing this additional condition on it is certainly, there's nothing wrong with it. There's nothing illegal about it. But it becomes harder to keep track of over time in terms of making sure that it's enforced.
So, is that saying that this isn't a practice that's done a lot? But I guess we don't have a lot of subdivisions?
We try not to do that because it is typically better to rely on the development code.
Thank you. I am certainly sympathetic to the appellant. And I think especially for people who have owned property for a long time, when things change around you, it has to be frustrating. But I do believe that this is a good use of the property, and I would like to defer to the decision by the planning commission. Any final comments or perhaps a motion?
Well, since I love this block, I would like to make a motion to deny the appeal. And is there something else I'm supposed to say?
No, the staff will bring a resolution for formal adoption at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Hundley?
Aye, thank you.
Am I still supposed to be saying what the votes are?
Yes, you are.
I haven't done this in like five months. It was a four-to-one vote denying the appeal.
Thank you.
We will give it just a minute to clear the room a little bit. Thank you all. Item 6-1, discussion, consideration, and possible action to adopt a resolution reaffirming the City of Sonoma's commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as part of a worldwide effort to address climate change. Authorize a letter of support to Governor Brown and other related matters as deemed necessary. And we will begin with our city manager.
Mayor Hundley, and council, on June 5th, Mayor Hundley brought up the issue of having the council reaffirm its commitment to greenhouse gas and climate action. And so, before you tonight is a resolution that was written. And then also, there was a letter to the mayor, I'm sorry, to Governor Brown, excuse me. And if there are any other actions the council would like to consider for this, this would be the time to do that. And there's also, the other item is to authorize Mayor Hundley to join the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, a network of about 100 different cities and mayors that are working together. So, with that, I'll happy to answer questions, or turn it to the mayor to comment and present this item as well.
Thank you. I would just say a few words. Thank you all for agreeing to consider these actions and putting together the resolution and the letter. There were a few people from the community that reached out and that I met with, two were in the audience, Logan Harvey and Ken Brown, also Lisa Summers. And it was a fun exercise going through and thinking of things that the city has already done that contribute to this end result. And we have an impressively long list. And I don't think it's actually been compiled in one source, anyway. You know, our planning director did some brainstorming, too. So, I think that it would be good, going forward, to keep a catalog of all the little things that we're doing. Because, you know, there's people that don't even, haven't, haven't even, haven't realized that the city switched all of our electricity accounts to 100% renewable energy. And I wanted to bring this before you all. Right now, you know, in light of things that are happening at a higher level than us, but with something like this, I think it's important for it to stay at the top of people's minds. So, these documents are to serve as a reminder of all the things that we have done and the fact that we have made big commitments for reducing our greenhouse gases already as a part of Climate Action 2020. So, I look forward to your comments. Any questions? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment.
Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street. I was honored that Mayor Hundley asked me and some other citizens to participate in drawing the document up. It was a pleasure to serve. It does bring to mind the loss of our fig tree at Adele Harrison. It's too sad to talk about right now. But I think in the future, with more items like this, those mistakes will not be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
All I've ever done since I've come up here is complain, so let's not do that for this one. I want to thank the city council for considering this and for Rachel, for taking the lead on this. I think it's really important, regardless of what's going up on above us or anything like that at higher levels of government, no matter what, it's important for cities to do their part and for them to... to do their part and for them to, to work hard to, to make this world a place where our grandkids and our children can grow up safely. Climate change is a serious issue and the city's been taking the lead to, to work hard and to make this a better city and to make this a cleaner city and make this the standard bearer here. There's, there's places where, where we need to do more work, absolutely, but I think reaffirming what we've already done, switching to 100% clean power is amazing. The fact that we're willing to, to take that, that additional financial burden for the good of, for the good of others, making an extremely intelligent move to switch our lights to LEDs is, is very, very nice. The fact that we've always had a bike path since I was born here in Sonoma, we've always been promoting that and continue to do so. I think that's beautiful and I think it's important that we do pat ourselves on the back from time to time, so not to toot your own horns, but a beep beep, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Council member Cook?
Well, I'll go ahead and say that I do support this and I liked what members of the public and members of the council were talking about what Sonoma has done. You know, the 100% renewable energy that the city buys that cost the City of Sonoma about $19,000 more that I 100% support is, is something that we're doing our part. So I think having a resolution that affirms that is great. I'm not going to bring up leaf blowers, but we don't have those anymore, so they're electric. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve a resolution of the Sonoma City Council, of the City of Sonoma reaffirming its commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as part of a world, worldwide effort to address climate change.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I support this also, but I'm sure the letter is grammatically correct on the last sentence. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Our old-fashioned Fourth of July parade and fireworks is a local favorite, comma. However, there's always something interesting happening in our city.
Wouldn't you rather have a semicolon and a comma?
Yeah, maybe, or why is it however? I don't know how it's not.
They won't come anyway.
They're not in opposition. It's fine, send it, however you want. I just.
I think it should be a semicolon, I don't think that's grammatically correct. I know that's a minor.
Can we have that on the final draft? A semicolon and a comma?
Sorry, I'm a lawyer, that's what we do.
Okay, anything? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Harrington?
Aye.
Council member Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Council member Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your support and thank you public for yours. Moving on. Item 6.2, discussion, consideration, and possible action on operational changes to the 2017 farmers market. And we will begin with our city manager.
Can I just say for the public and anyone watching at home, my iPad just ran out of battery, so I'm switching to looking at the agenda on my phone. I'm not looking at my phone, for the record.
Would you like a charger?
Oh, all the better. Thank you. Sure.
Look who's prepared today.
Not me.
Are we, are we maxed out on the AC? Our 100% renewable powered air conditioning? So it's okay if we turn it up? Okay. The city manager.
Mayor and council, back in, earlier this year, January, February, the council point is subcommittee to look and approve some changes to the 2017 farmers market. Those, the main changes were moving the music from the Horseshoe to the Grinstead Amphitheater two times a month, reducing the overall number of food vendors to help retain a focus on farm vendors, and moving food trucks to the back parking lot and for inclusion two times a month on the second, fourth Tuesdays. So a council ad hoc subcommittee comprised of Mayor Protim, Gary Edwards, and council member Amy Harrington worked with city staff and two members of the Valley of the Moon certified farmers market. So there were a couple meetings and staff did work as well. And so there was some data and information that was collected. There was a patron survey that was done for about almost two weeks and some information collected there. There was also vendor surveys collected and there were counts done of kind of the attendance of the Horseshoe and at the Grinstead Theater. So the group met and reviewed the data that came out of that and a few things about the data. One, you know, if you remember, we've had two, we've only had, I think, six events so far, farmers market nights, and two of those nights were really cold. And so, one, an opening night is always really high and really large, so there's, our overall kind of pool of data is somewhat, you know, limited. And so while we looked at the counts and the data, the group really felt that the, some of that information was kind of inconclusive because of the weather. And clearly those, you know, the weather affects attendance overall. In terms of the data for vendors, some of that information also felt like there really weren't true trends. You've got some vendors, this is the first year, you've got some vendors that have been coming to the market for a while, but overall, you still have a pretty small number of vendors and there was kind of a different perspective. So there wasn't any theme or trends that we could show there. I think the only thing we could say is that vendors in the front of City Hall did better, did better when food trucks weren't there. That would make some sense, comes of kind of a better focus up front. In terms of music, the opening night was kind of the highest turnout for music and the next highest night was the night, the Tuesday following the end of school, which also makes some sense. 93% of the folks who completed the survey thought music located in front of City Hall was good to excellent. So the 93% of the folks really want the music up front and want that returned, kind of as it was done in the past. 44% thought the music located in the Grinstead Theater also was good to excellent and there, we definitely got feedback from folks that liked the music in the back as well. And overall, folks felt like the music this year was better than last, last year's. So as staff looked at this and heard the conversation between members of the community that came and spoke and then conversations with Valley of the Moon staff and board member and then with the ad hoc, we're making these recommendations to the council. Remember, this is only about the current year, 2017. The whole issue of 2018 and what council wants to do, if you want to do an RFP, if you want to do a renewal of the contract, if you want to look at kind of the scope and what's occurring in the market, that's a conversation for later. The ad hoc committee was also still tasked with doing that work, but that will come, that will come back at a later, at a later time. Excuse me. So staff's recommendation to council on the primary things is, one, in terms of the number of vendors, just retain the current number of vendors. And it seems to be working so far, so far, fine. If at some point as it goes through the summer, if the farmers market as the nonprofit is having problems and financially, so far it seems to be okay, but if that does start to occur, then I would ask that you basically authorize the city manager, myself, to basically add some additional vendors as a way to help them with their bottom line and adding up to a max of five. But that would be only if financially of issues within, for the nonprofit were problematic. Two, leaving the food trucks where they currently are on the second and fourth Tuesdays at this point. In terms of the music, which I think is the kind of the more sensitive point for patrons, really at this point, staff's recommendation is to allow music in the horseshoes on all nights except when the Jazz Society is performing, which are those second Tuesdays of June, July, August, and September. And having watched this, the second Tuesday in June, it is a fabulous event, lots of big music and really carries. So we're recommending though, other than that, go ahead and let the farmers market program music back in the horseshoe. But we would like to work with the farmers market and to also work with city staff and where city staff would help take the lead, where maybe at least one other time a month and maybe more, depending what we can find, we bring some different music to, or different folks to Grinstead. And maybe it's non-music, it could be a variety of things, but some activity to really use the amphitheater and create some fun energy there for the other part of the plaza. You know, we have a large plaza and you can do two smaller music venues and not have them compete. And so our community events manager could help do this and we think that this would be, we're not looking at paying vendors, it's really just kind of electricity and a little bit of sound and we, you know, maybe that's transcendence, maybe it's a local music provider, but it could be, you know, just a different way to provide some different music. And the other thing we'd like to try is while in the back on those, on the Tuesdays where we don't have the farmer, where we don't have the food trucks, there is some kind of empty space in the back where we would like to try to work with some of the different nonprofits who might want to come in and do some more youth or family oriented activities just along with the theme that we're piloting things, trying things, or mixing it up a little bit this year. And maybe that's, you know, either one of the art museums, Art Escape, excuse me, bringing in art for kids or some easels, maybe it's chalk, maybe it's working with Boys and Girls Club and they bring out hula hoops or different other fun activities. But it could be a way to create a little more maybe of a kid or a fun zone and really allowing some of our nonprofits to highlight some of their talents. So those are the staff's recommendations in terms of changes and again, we'll come back, the ad hoc committee will continue to work over the next couple of months and we'll be coming back to council with recommendations and thoughts about the 2018 market. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And do our, does our ad hoc committee have any comments they'd like to add?
Well, just so you know, we had two meetings to collect data and talk about all the things that had happened that were open to the public. And from those meetings, you know, we talked about all these things that Kathy just described, which I won't go into again, but one of the concerns people had, just so you know, was that if the space behind City Hall is open, that it creates a kind of like a lot, which is okay, but a lot of gatherings of teenagers and that previously that had been kind of a problem, that it got a little rowdy back there. And so the solution to that was, well, why don't we do something fun there instead of just having it be vacant? And so that's sort of where the brainstorm came up with like, well, we could do kids activities or chalk or have nonprofits come in, but not leave it so it's vacant one week and food trucks the next, but make it sort of fun, not commercial, but family oriented, good activities in the back and then have the food trucks on the other week. So that was the context of that discussion. But I did want to say that, you know, people were very nervous about any changes to the farmers market and I appreciate all of the community input and the willingness of the farmers market to, even though they're nervous about it, to try the changes and have honest feedback about what it was and to work collaboratively with us and so I think that's been great. And, and I look forward to continuing to work together to figure it out.
Do we have any questions? We'll go to public comment and come. All right, I will take it out to the public for public comment.
Members of the council and staff, I'm Deborah Emery, 1321 Heaven Hill Road. And, you know, we've heard over the years, you know, the trending and trying to change the Sonoma farmers market. We came here in 1985 with our family, we started our property up there and then came up here full-time in the year 2000. One of the things I think we overlook, Sonoma is changing, but what I loved about Sonoma back then was the opportunity to gather with people we did not know that were locals here, the vendors, you know, maybe a jewelry shop or clothing store, the food vendors and what have you. John and I created an entire relationship with this community starting out like that. And I see that, that people are saying, well, it's more tourist oriented. Well, we were there just the other night when they had the jazz event there. I would say 80% of the people, because we've met them, so many of the people here in town, were locals. The other thing that I think is really important regarding the food trucks, and then I want to talk about music and I'll turn it over to my husband. A lot of people in this community, we talk about affordable housing and things to do for people in this community. The Sonoma farmers market, you know, we're going to buy vegetables if we're going to buy or we're not going to, if we're not. But it's a great place for people who cannot afford to go to our restaurants to buy a quick meal, sit down with friends, have their kids dance to the music. I think it's probably the, like a fairy tale here, being able, we have grandkids now, we love bringing them here and letting them experience our community with our sons and daughters so that they too can enjoy this family experience. I mean, I love the vendors, we love the opportunity, we usually go out to a restaurant, but if it's the kids are there, we go to the food booth. It's just a wonderful place for a gathering for a community as so many of our resources are going away. This is hometown, this is small town, and I think what we have is beautiful. The Grinstead Theater's lovely if I'm going to a show. My kids and grandkids don't want to sit in there, they want to play with other kids, they want to mix with other members of our community. That's too structured, at least for our gang.
I'm Dr. John Emery, I'm Deborah's husband, and I support everything she said. I think the staff did a great job on their survey and I fully recognize that everybody seems to want to have the music come back into, into the amphitheater. So everybody had a great time. Last Tuesday was wonderful, there just a right, right number of vendors and right number of everything. There was people all over the place, so let's bring it back to the amphitheater.
No, back to the horseshoe.
To the horseshoe. Yeah, that's, what am I talking about? That's, excuse me for that, back to the horseshoe. Thank you very much.
We just thank you for all the work you're doing, but think of the, everybody at large, some people just can't afford it and it's a perfect place to just hang out and be with your friends and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, my name is Lily and I live at 578 Estimadera Drive. My comment will be brief. The amphitheater, yeah, a lot of people don't sit in there, it's really dark, you know? I was sitting last, there was a performance there and I thought it was really great. I've lived here my whole life and I thought it was really great that we brought music back to the amphitheater. I thought it was awesome. The only comment I would have is just maybe if we could get some sort of little lights in there, it'd be a little bit more ambiance, you know, a little bit more festive and I think, you know, you know, I'm 28 years old and I'm hanging out with all my friends and everyone, you know, hasn't experienced the amphitheater as much because we never have music in it and we're all just thinking like, this would be a great place to continue to have music, but maybe just a little lighting, but, you know, little outdoor string lights, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Hello, Chris Welch, 463 Claudia Drive. I'm the manager of the Tuesday night farmers market. I just wanted to make one small correction on the staff report, or maybe a clarification. Under feedback and findings, when it says data from vendors was inconclusive, overall small number of vendors participating, that was confusing to me because certainly in terms of the survey that I submitted to the vendors, I was dogged in my pursuit of getting them to fill it out. So if this means a small number of our vendors returned the survey, that's not correct. We had almost 100%. So now if you mean that there's a small number of vendors, I mean, we have 50 to 60 vendors, there's been a small change in that because of the removal of some stalls behind City Hall, but it's still about 50 to 60. So I, I didn't quite know what that was, but I wanted to clarify. It's not a, a big deal. And then I appreciate what the Emery said and they certainly reflect what we hear a lot anecdotally from the people who stop at the manager's booth and who call us and who, you know, give us, you know, their input. And I also just want to say that we have appreciated working with the ad hoc committee and with Kathy and, you know, it has been challenging mostly because of the community and their confusion, the, the press that confused them and, you know, it's just the nature of the beast, basically. But when you go to the market on Tuesday nights, you will see that there's a feeling that is pretty similar to what it has been. Now, the one thing that I am very concerned about, and when we talk about the vendor survey and inconclusive data, is the impact on our vendors. And what I would say to you is that we don't have clear numbers on that, but again, in our survey, they have the right to comment and anecdotally, I'll tell you, many of our vendors say that they do better when the music is out front, you know, there's just more people wandering around and things like that. But I would also say that in the case of our vendors and the public, everybody gets a little freaked out about change and so that was why we have tried so hard, all of us, to get data. And what I think all of us agreed at our most recent meeting, because we want to move this process along and we want to, we want to, you know, do it in a timely manner, but we pretty much all agreed that because of the weather and a number of things, that the data that we have been collecting diligently is still somewhat inconclusive. So I, I So I think that we support the, the basic premise of what the city manager has laid out here, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, staff. Bill Darden, President of the Board. Haven't seen me in a while. I opened the market and then had surgery, but tomorrow you get to see me again. Anyway, all I have to say to you folks is, this effort that we put together as a joint effort with the ad hoc committee and with everybody working together to try to make this the very best that we can possibly do, I certainly appreciate. Because it takes a lot of work to put this market on, first of all, and then to make it a better market. It's working well with the information that we've gotten, inconclusive as it is, but we're still going to collect, and we'll come up with things that I think will be completely good for the community. And I can, and I thank the Emerys for their input, but I totally agree, this is a family affair, and I just want to thank City Council again and city staff for all that we have done together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Logan Harvey, 527 Marion Drive. So I should have thought, last time I was going by the Farmers Market, I don't know if this is really up for debate at all or up for discussion, but the intersection right in front of Broadway, basically where Broadway meets the plaza, gets really, really congested. People are walking all over the place, and I noticed last time I was driving by that there were a number of police officers that were there to obviously watch the, the market and make sure that everything was okay. But if there was a way that we could get somebody to direct traffic at that time, it might make for a much smoother moment. I have no idea if that's actually possible, but I thought, throw it out there. And just addition to that, don't get rid of corn dogs, ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? I will give my city manager the microphone.
Great. Well, just as we close public comment, I just really wanted to, I didn't see my initial remarks, but I want to thank Chris Welch and, and Bill, I mean, this, and Lisa Jansen on our team has been kind of the point person. So these things take a lot of work, and I do, I do know that Chris really worked hard to get the data, putting the information together. So, you know, this, to really put all of this, it, it took a concentrated effort and a good teamwork. So I really want to thank the, the market for their efforts and Lisa for her, her operational assistance as well.
All right, before I close it for real, any more public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for comments and, are we taking an action? Yes, and an action.
So first of all, I want to thank Chris and, and Bill, having our, our meetings. It's been great to get to know you guys a little bit, and I've learned a lot more about your operations, et cetera. And I'm glad we have this hot weather because we're actually going to start seeing some real produce now. That'll be great. I took my son to opening day at, at the Stompers last Tuesday, and when we skirted our way back through the plaza, it was just great to see the, I think it was the Jazz that was here last time, and the entire plaza was covered with people. And as far as our climate action goals, I'm sure 100% of those people rode their bikes to the plaza, but I don't, I'm not sure. But anyhow, but it was just a beautiful night. It was great coming back from the ballgame. We only lasted a couple of innings up there and, but I was very pleased to see all the quadrants of the plaza were just alive, and it was wonderful. And I agree with the Emerys that, I mean, I've been down with Rotary several times over the, many years. Something's beeping. That's, I don't know what that is. Anyhow. Oh, it's my, it's this. Anyhow, I'll go on. I'll pretend I don't hear it. Anyhow, it's, I like to, one of my goals in this entire process is that we have this great asset of Grinstead, and I agree, it's uncomfortable. We did the Bear Flag Revolt a week or two ago, and the sound is not good. And I agree with this young lady over here, the, the lighting could be done. One of my ultimate goals is to, is to turn that into a venue that's usable for the entire public, whether it's once a month, whether it's, you know, the Jazz, I'm sure is going to want to be there ongoing, but let's improve it and let's figure out how to do that. But I just, you know, my, one of my goals is to bring attention to that, and to the entire plaza and how we, how we protect it. So I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I'm wide open to the, the conversations that Lisa has had and the proposal that's been put together, and I'm going to support it.
Councilmember Cook?
I guess I'll be the only one up here not singing kumbaya. One of the public did say that it is true, it was very, you know, a lot of misinformation out there about the Farmers Market, and a lot of people just didn't understand, you know, the, the last minute changes right before the Farmers Market was, you know, about ready to start or getting, getting their vendors. That's when we have RFPs, and I really think that this is a discussion that we need to have when we have the RFP process. I always look at it, when you're driving down the road and your passenger grabs the wheel and starts staring the car, and there could be an accident, or maybe they're going to try to help you from hitting that tree. But I believe in the process. I'm happy that, you know, the discussion and all that. I just think the timing wasn't right. I just wanted to put that out there because I think a lot of people don't understand what the whole Farmers Market issue was, and it was more of a last minute. I will not be supporting this tonight because I would like to see an RFP come out, you know, quickly, so we can discuss this, you know, for, for next year. And the reason I don't support it is because I really do believe that we should have music on the horseshoe. I don't like the fact that even the, once a month, having it over in the amphitheater when the Jazz plays. To me, that is just, you know, something that I would never support. So not that I'm throwing the baby out with the bathwater, I appreciate all the, the work that the ad hoc did, and, you know, to, to agree to disagree is okay in Sonoma. We do it all the time. But I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, I support an RFP, and I'm not saying that I think that the Farmer Market Board is doing a bad job, because I think they've done a great job. And probably the reason that I'm not supporting this tonight is because the fact, I don't believe in fixing something that's not broken unless you go through the complete process. And we just have not went through that process, so I will not be voting for this tonight.
Councilmember Harrington?
Oh, I mean, I already made my main comments, but just in response to Councilmember Cook, I think it's really important that when the Jazz plays, just, you know, even though it's sort of a minor issue, that there not be a competing band. They have always played in the amphitheater, but previously there was a competing band. And if I were the Jazz performers, I think it's pretty rude to have a competing band on the horseshoe when I am trying to present a show. So I think it's very polite to recognize the contribution and the performance of the Jazz performers and let them stand alone where they have always performed in the amphitheater. And so I just have always thought that was rude to have two bands at the same time because now they're competing against each other. So on that issue, I actually think it's very polite to do that. But on the issue of the RFP, I think through this process that we've seen that we can work really well with this board, and they're super conscientious and hardworking, and I don't think we need a, a RFP. And I support, you know, spending some more time on the contract for next year, but I'm happy with the current providers of the Farmers Market, and I appreciate their volunteer work. And I support the recommendations of the city manager.
Well, I'll support the recommendations of the city manager, but I'm, I'm happy that you explained about the sparse response. It sort of makes sense to me because I thought, I don't understand what's going on. I like the idea of possibly creating activities for young, younger kids in the back. You know, I think I'll just hold my comments, I'm, I support the project. Thanks.
I will also be supporting the recommendation, and I would like to say thank you to the Farmers Market Board, to our ad hoc committee, to city staff. And I think this whole exercise, even though it started off a little painfully, kind of defined this as a joint relationship between the city and the Farmers Market Board. And I love the idea of the, you know, the, the city maybe taking the lead on these off Tuesday projects in the amphitheater, putting something in there. I think the amphitheater could use a little more love and attention as far as our infrastructure. I like the idea of us bringing more kids stuff to the back and the city being, helping out with that. From one of the comments, you reminded me, the Broadway intersection. I don't know if there's like particular peak hours, but you can sit at that intersection for 10 minutes sometimes just because of the staggered walking. And I, I know that the long-term solution is going to be something, you know, from the city, but I don't know if maybe during the, just the summer when we're at high numbers, if there was something that we could do for at least a couple hours to just get people to walk together rather than staggering themselves. Or I'll just try to remember not to drive through the plaza.
Like ducks.
And I have been at a dog class at Pets Lifeline on Tuesday evenings, which ends tomorrow night, so I'll be able to join you all. But other than that, I think that this is great, and I, I just, I love the direction this is all going, and I'm really thankful that everyone was patient through all of this, so I'll be happy to vote for it. Any more discussion or emotion?
I'm prepared to make the motion.
Want to see mine?
So to the city manager, how detailed does the motion have to be?
It doesn't. I mean, I think in the agenda, at a high level, your, the recommendation was no change in the number of vendors, no change in food trucks, I'm changing the music as outlined, where we'll have music back in the amphitheater except on, when the Jazz is, I'm sorry, music back on the horseshoe except when the, when the... I did the same thing Mr. Emery did, except when we have the, you know, music with the, with the Jazz, and then creating a pilot project to look for other things to bring music, more music to Grinstead, and also some low-cost fun activities to the back. So you can just say that, that's your motion and we're okay.
I should say what you said?
You could just, you don't have to repeat it all. I so move.
Oh, I move to accept the staff report as, as presented.
I'll second.
All right, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to take a very quick break. Thank you. Thank you.
Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center, located at 815 West Napa Street. Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center, located at 815 West Napa Street. For more information, you can go to sonopaintcenter.com. And Larbrey Automotive, located at 18155 Sonoma Highway. For more information, you can go to larbreyauto.com. Sonoma Highway. For more information, you can go to larburyauto.com.
We are on item 63, study session to discuss and receive direction on potential changes to the regulation of vacation rentals. And I'll hand it over to our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor Hunley, members of the city council. So by way of background, the council has requested a review of the city's vacation rental regulations, both in terms of permitting requirements for new vacation rental applications, as well as potential new operational regulations that would apply to all vacation rentals. And to assure that any new applications for vacation rentals comply with changes that the council may choose to implement, the council has previously adopted an interim ordinance that prohibits the approval of any new applications for a vacation rental. So just to be clear about terms, under the development code, a vacation rental is defined as the rental or letting of up to two complete residential units containing bedrooms, kitchens, and bathrooms for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. And unlike a bed and breakfast, an onsite manager is not required for a vacation rental. Currently, there are 49 legal vacation rentals within city limits, and of those 28 were designated as legal non-conforming in a 1999 ordinance or otherwise grandfathered in, while another 21 have been approved since that time. To flesh out options for the council to consider, the planning commission held two study sessions recently on vacation rental regulations, on May 11th and on June 8th. The first focused on permitting options, which again would apply to new applications for vacation rentals, while the second focused on potential new operating requirements. And so just to begin with the permitting options briefly, in terms of the current regulations, vacation rentals are now allowed under two provisions of the development code. First being the adaptive reuse provisions of, in the historic development standards of the development code. So this is a method by which a historic structure can be approved for a use that would otherwise not be permitted in the base zoning designation as a means of preserving that historic structure. And vacation rentals are identified as an adaptive reuse in that part of the code. In 2009, the council amended provisions making two changes. First, to be eligible to apply, the property must be listed or eligible for listing on the state register of historic places. And second, the property must, to be approved as an adaptive reuse, must be found to be in such a state of disrepair or deferred maintenance that the income from the vacation rental use is necessary to stem further deterioration, correct efficient conditions, and avoid demolition. So between those two changes, the council set a pretty high bar for approving a vacation rental as an adaptive reuse. And since 2009, only two such applications have been approved under that approach. So apart from the adaptive reuse provisions, vacation rentals are prohibited in residential zoning districts. Now, the second allowance under the code right now is for a use permit, just the normal use permit process, but this is only applicable to properties having a zoning designation of either mixed use or commercial. And over the past four years, the planning commission has approved nine use permit applications involving the conversion of spaces within those zoning districts to vacation rentals. Now, in some instances, the application involved the conversion of a commercial tenant space. Another example is a small building on Broadway that was originally built as a residence, but that had been converted to office use many years ago. And then most recently, two tenant spaces within Sonoma Cart Shops were approved for conversion to vacation rental use. That application was unusual in that those tenant spaces already had use allowances for office, apartment, and live work. And I'd also like to highlight that particular application because it was controversial, it was appealed to the city council, and it ultimately led to the discussion we're having tonight. Because it was, as a result of that application, or at least that was kind of a spark, that the council adopted the current moratorium on new applications for vacation rentals. So in terms of changes to permitting requirements, we've identified a couple of basic options. One would be to simply eliminate vacation rentals as an allowed use. Under that option, existing vacation rentals would continue to operate as legal non-conforming uses, but new ones would not be allowed. A second option would be to eliminate the use permit allowance for vacation rentals, but to retain the adaptive reuse allowance. A third option would be to continue to allow vacation rentals as an adaptive reuse and as a discretionary use in the mixed use and commercial zones, but with some added restrictions, namely to change the permit requirement from a use permit to a zoning permit. Under the use permit process, once approved, a use permit runs with the land, while we could, if directed by the council, create a new type of application, a zoning permit that would be designed to expire upon change of ownership. And within the mixed use zone, another option under, this one would be to eliminate any allowance for converting a residential unit into a vacation rental. And we would just note, the one wrinkle is that under option three, the adaptive reuse allowance, if retained, would continue to be a use permit. And that is really just a function of it being in the adaptive reuse provisions of the zoning ordinance. And if you're making the finding that you're granting this approval in order to maintain an income stream, to renovate, and maintain this historic structure, approving it as a zoning permit that terminates upon a change of ownership is probably not a necessarily logical approach. In the planning commission discussion of those options, there really was no consensus. And so we kind of report some of the planning commission comments in the staff report, but we didn't get a clearer direction from the planning commission in terms of a preferred option. So the second area of discussion had to do with operational regulations. And under the current requirements, there's a requirement for a business license, the payment of transient occupancy taxes, there's a maximum length of stay, we have fire and life safety requirements, including a requirement for an annual inspection, and we have regulations on signs. Potential changes in terms of operational regulations could include limitations on occupancy, that is, the number of persons who can be within the vacation rental, limits on guests, as a way of, you know, primarily preventing de facto parties and receptions associated with use of vacation rentals. Additional noise restrictions could be applied, especially limits on outdoor activities in the evening. There could be a prohibition on amplified sound. Another potential change would be to require a designated property manager. That has typically been required in conditions of approval for new vacation rentals, and it's probably makes sense to include that as a standard requirement. There could be requirements concerning internet advertising, advertisements, and listings. This would accomplish two things. It would inform prospective guests of the rules, and it would help the city enforce its vacation rental rules by making it easier for us to identify ads that are for legitimate approved vacation rentals within city limits, and ads for essentially rogue vacation rental operations. And lastly, the council could require an inspection fee. For the most part, these options are modeled on the requirements adopted by the county pertaining to vacation rentals and in considering whether or not to impose new requirements. It is necessary to strike a balance in terms of addressing potential operational impacts, business feasibility, and the staff resources available for monitoring. In terms of the planning commission discussion, they were generally supportive of the potential additions, especially numbers three through seven. A third issue that the council asked us to discuss has to do with hosted vacation rentals. That's basically the Airbnb model, where the owner continues to occupy the residence, but rents out a room or rooms on an occasional basis to, as a way of making extra money. Right now, even apart from the moratorium that's currently in place, hosted vacation rentals are not allowed within the city of Sonoma. There's never been any kind of allowance for that activity. In terms of options for change, at least one council member in the discussion that the council had last November asked that consideration be given to an allowance for hosted vacation rentals as part of this current review. We would just note that the council and staff over the years, and in this recent discussion, has received correspondence, correspondence from different homeowners who have asked that consideration be given to establishing that kind of category within the development code. And I would just remind the council, or at least those on the council who were there at the time, that this concept was reviewed by the planning commission and council in 2015. And in fact, a draft ordinance was actually developed and brought to the city council. That ordinance included a zoning permit type of process so that the allowance would be tied to the property owner, not the land. It would have limited the use to a single room within an owner occupied, single-family residence, required the property owner to remain on site. It included restrictions on the frequency of rentals. Ultimately, the council on a vote of three to one decided not to pursue that allowance. And that was a recommendation of the planning commission as well. There were a couple of reasons for that. First, you know, I've mentioned possible rules and restrictions that could be applied to that kind of use, and those all seem reasonable in terms of making sure that we come up with something that respects the conditions of the larger neighborhood. But those rules can be hard to enforce. And second, the council did not want to create a disincentive for homeowners to engage in the long-term rental of unused rooms. But since the council is reevaluating the regulation of vacation rentals generally, it's certainly possible for it to revisit these regulations. But we'd certainly need the direction at this point to determine whether there's a council majority that's in support of taking a closer look at that type of allowance. And with regard to the planning commission discussion, only one planning commissioner expressed interest in that option, based on the idea that it could provide for greater oversight of guests, as well as income to onsite property owners. But other commissioners were concerned that, again, it would provide a financial disincentive for property owners to offer long-term rentals, or provide junior accessory dwelling units, as has recently been allowed for under changes to the code. In the staff report, we provide the council with a brief update on enforcement. And I just really want to say that by expanding code enforcement capabilities, the council has greatly improved the city's ability to respond quickly to complaints and concerns about illegal vacation rentals. It's been tremendously helpful. And so we provided some examples of that. In terms of fines, a vacation rental that's found to be operating illegally can be subject to fines of up to $250 a day if they continue without choosing to voluntarily abate that use. If there is a second violation after a first violation has been confirmed through the administrative abatement process, that fine can be increased to $500 per day. And we also, through the enforcement process, seek restitution of transient occupancy tax. And so we've got a couple of recent examples in which fines and restitution were ordered in the amounts of $2,000 in one instance, $4,000 in another. This is not intended as any kind of revenue center, but we do want to have fines that truly discourage, that are successful in discouraging illegal vacation rentals within city limits. We feel that's very important. So again, this is a study session item, and we're here for your direction. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our planning director?
Yes. I just wanted to ask one question with respect to the municipal services. I forget the whole, I had it here, but we still, we still use them. Is that right?
That's not a contract that I administer. We've used them for the last two years. I'm not sure if they're on board this year or not, but I can find out.
We still have a contract with community services, and if there's additional research we need or something, we could ask them to do that. I do not believe they've done any additional research in this area, at least since I've been here the last six months.
Thank you.
Any further questions at this time?
David, on any of the, I think it's a total of 58 units that are permitted now? Total, there's 49.
Well, that number actually decreased slightly. We had someone change out a vacation rental into a second unit, and, which was certainly welcome.
And have we ever had any kind of ADA issues or anything that?
Well, a vacation rental is considered to be, in essence, in terms of the building code, a single-family residence. And so the ADA rules are relatively limited compared to, say, the rules that would apply to a hotel.
And what about fire code, sprinklers, et cetera? Do we have any kind of?
Well, there's, if the unit didn't already have a fire sprinkler, it wouldn't necessarily need to install a fire sprinkler system as a result of an approval of a vacation rental. But there are fire and life safety requirements, including posting of emergency exits, having a fire extinguisher on hand, things of that nature.
Yeah. Is there any kind of study, or have you guys previously looked at it that, like, that's already been done about the economic impact of vacation rentals on rental stock and housing prices?
I've looked for that kind of information, and I personally haven't seen studies in that regard. But certainly, a vacation rental that is not owner occupied is taking out a unit from the housing stock. I mean, that's just how it works. But apart from that obvious statement, I don't really have much to add.
Any further questions? I'll take it out to the public for public comment at this time. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Who's next? Councilmember Cook?
Well, I'll just start out. I think the council went in the right direction with the moratorium on vacation rentals, and I will still be supporting that. I think with the affordable housing issue here in Sonoma, I think that it would be not good for us to go another direction. I know when I was on the council, we did talk about hosted vacation rentals, and we talked about different things. But I think in the five years on the council and everything that I've read, and seeing where the state of the city of Sonoma is right now on housing, I would definitely be supporting number one, which is eliminate vacation rentals as an allowed use.
All right. Who's next?
David, could you please explain business license required to me? How might that work?
Well, if you're operating a vacation rental, you're in essence operating a small business, and you need to pay the city a annual business license fee. It's relatively modest. I don't recall the amount, but that's all that means.
And then I think I may have seen somewhere in the report about when ads for vacation rentals are provided, that somewhere in there possibly a license? We should have a license. And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Oh, perhaps I answered the wrong question there. One of the options in terms of permitting was to create a new type of permit for vacation rentals that would essentially be something called a zoning permit. I think at one point, we might have called it a zoning license, but we were corrected in that regard by the city attorney's office. A zoning permit, unlike a use permit, would be tied to the property owner. Right now, if a vacation rental is approved, that approval runs with the land, and so the property can be sold and resold, and that approval will remain valid indefinitely. Where under the zoning permit option, which is described in option three, the permit would be tied to the property owner. And the idea behind that is that it takes away some of the economic benefit, if you will, of, that you reap, basically, if you get that use permit that runs with the land. That provides a source of income that increases the value of the property for resale, and it never goes away. And so as a result, the vacation rental use rarely goes away. A zoning permit would at least do something to remove that economic benefit, and it would also provide a way of having some extra review upon a change of ownership to make sure that the vacation rental is not causing a problem to its neighbors. But all of that, I would also add that this is a brand-new permit that would have to be created if the council wanted it. be created if the council wanted us to go in that direction.
I know it's a stretch, but it's similar to a liquor license, and with what you're speaking of, I agree that we shouldn't let someone continue with a license even when they bought the home. The other thing I wanted to mention, I, I can't remember if I was the person who discussed rentals that I thought was a good idea, especially for seniors who are trying to, you know, supplement their, their income. I thought as long as someone is there, rents a room from them, I think that, for me, it's a great idea, because people are really strapped now, and I thought that would be a good way, especially because they're on-site, and they would be able to regulate behavior. So, I, I was, I supported that. Thank you.
I have mixed feelings about vacation rentals. I think that the idea of the permit running with the land is bad. Like, I don't think that's a, you know, having that right in perpetuity doesn't seem like a good idea. I'm wondering if a zoning permit can be shortened instead of running just with the ownership period, maybe it can be a period of years, like, five years. I recognize the impact on housing, but I also think that if a property owner wants to have someone come stay in their house, that they should be able to do that probably for a limited number of times per year. It's a slippery slope, because there's people that will take advantage of that, and then they will just have an unhosted vacation rental, thereby ruining it for everyone. I recognize that as a potential problem, but I also think, like, for example, with regard to a senior, it's possible that, you know, a 75-year-old doesn't want to have a roommate, but that they wouldn't mind having supplemental income, having a visitor stay every once in a while, especially with our ever-increasing utility bills. So, I think I do support hosted vacation rentals. I'm not sure about all the other rules, number of days, the type of permit. I think that, you know, if there were complaints, or you were found to have not been present, you know, that you should lose your license immediately. I mean, there's a variety of rules that would have to go along with it, but I think I'm in favor of that.
So, the other day, my kids just got out of school last week, but we were walking down, and I won't name the street, but there are, like, eight people coming out of a home with roller bags, and I thought, gee, this looks a little odd. And so, I, I think I agree with Councilmember Cook. I mean, the, the lack of housing we have, if somebody wants to rent out their room, you can probably get 1,500 bucks for a room in Sonoma now. That's pretty good. And so, if it's somebody who's 75 years old, probably bought their house, and their mortgage is about, you know, my original mortgage was very cheap, and I'm not 75. But the, you know, the argument about supplemental income, if somebody came in and spent, like, the houses are going for $3 million now in a couple of days, you know, the taxes alone are 30 grand on that, right? Those people aren't going to be really renting their houses out for, if you can spend $3 million on a home here, you're not going to do that. But I, I see the inventory of opportunity of people who do want to rent a room out, and, you know, to somebody who wants to rent on a monthly basis, workforce housing. We talk over and over and over here at council about how there's no place for anybody to, that works here to live, people that are waitstaff, that sort of thing. So, I'm, I would support just continuing the moratorium on vacation rentals. I mean, there's, our hotel average is 80% occupancy, so there's another 20% of room there. I think, you know, there's, there's 1,200 hotel rooms being built around us right now outside of Sonoma. And I, I know the availability, I have clients who come in weekly that are not having any issues getting a very moderately priced place here during the week. I know on the weekends, it's very busy, but I just can't, you know, I, I don't want to see our neighborhood and all the kids we have in our school, you know, every other house turning out to be a vacation rental, and it's just, it continues to dissolve the community and the neighborhoods, as far as I'm concerned. And if somebody wants to do, you know, I can think of somebody like Irma Castillo, she could be renting out a room, you know, for a couple hundred dollars a night down there, but it's, it's not, I'd rather see her, somebody like that have a roommate that's paying 1,000 bucks, or a teacher right across the street. They could pay 1,000 bucks a month, or 1,500 dollars a month for, for a shared house, so. So, I'm not going to be, I'm going to support with Councilmember Cook continuing the moratorium.
All right. I, in a similar vein, from Vice Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Cook, the only thing that I support is adaptive reuse, because I think that losing historic assets would be worse than having a vacation rental.
I could go along with that.
And looking, and I don't support hosted vacation rentals, because, you know, I feel residential areas are for residents, and not only the impact on the neighborhood, but also on the, you know, housing market. I think it would just create, I think everyone would want to make some extra cash every now and then with their rooms. It would be really hard to enforce, and, you know, if we're going to be a tourism industry, I'd rather focus on the industry itself, which means keeping our hotels healthy, and that is it. And it's just, I mean, there's, what other time can you have a customer-serving business inside your house? As far as the operational regulations, I, so can we apply these to people who already have our non-conforming vacation rentals?
Yes.
Because they're like regulations?
Yes.
So, I, I like all of them, except the signs. I don't want to see signs outside people's houses, and particularly the occupancy limits, amplified sound, and the internet advertisements and listing, listings. And I guess that's it. Anyone else have any further comments? All right. Are we good? Thank you very much.
I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. Item 6.4, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the operating and capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2017 to 2018, and waiving the annual allocation equal to one-quarter of 1% of the budgeted general fund expenditures to the Public Art Fund for the fiscal year 2017 to 2018, and adopt a resolution authorizing in addition of an accounting manager position and elimination of the finance director personnel allocation to be replaced with assistant city manager slash administrative services director, including salary ranges and job descriptions as a part of the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 budget. And we will begin with the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Hunley and council. It's a delight to be here tonight and present to you the 1718 operating capital budget. I really, before, I turned over to Sue Casey, our interim finance director, to make the majority of the presentation. I want to thank council for your comments and insight last Monday. I also want to thank the management team. There's a lot of work that goes into a budget. Not only are we determining what and looking at what initiatives and kind of policy direction that the council as a whole wants to do, but we're also stepping back and looking at, or what does the organization need internally to accomplish those things? And, and also, it's a bit of a 3D puzzle, because we're looking at revenues, we're looking at expenditures, we're looking at reserves, where we've been, where we're going, and putting all that together to bring a presentation to you. So, I'm proud of this budget. As council knew, we lost our finance director the week before I started, had a part-time interim for about four months, and then Sue Casey came on board about six weeks ago, and has really helped us put this together in a very short timeframe. So, I'm looking forward next year to when we can take it up a tier again for you, but meanwhile, I want to turn it over to Sue to walk you and the community through some highlights.
Mayor Hunley and city council members, so this is the most exciting part of your agenda, so, probably for me, it is, anyway. So, on June 12, 2017, the city council, city staff, and, and interested members of the public convened in a budget workshop to review the proposed 1718 operating and capital improvement budgets. And at the workshop, there was some discussion, and the city manager presented a summary of the city council's strategic direction, and then I gave an overview of the city's projected revenues and expenses for fiscal year 1718, and then all of the department managers presented their accomplishment, accomplishments from the current fiscal year, and then their goals for 1718, and then they gave detailed overviews of their budgets that they manage. So, big picture, overall budget, the city of Sonoma has a total operating budget of 33.3 million, and that includes 17.5 million for the general fund budget, and that budget is balanced, and those amounts include all the transfers out for all funds. In addition, we have 3.66 million for a capital improvement budget, and our capital improvements, our projects are funded by transfers from other funds, special taxes, grants, and fund balance. And then finally, we have 164,000 carryover projects for the CIP that weren't completed in fiscal year 1617. So, expenditures were discussed in detail at the budget workshop, but I'm just going to give some highlights of what the budget includes for fiscal year 1718. First, we have a financial focus. We've funded the addition of accounting manager, and then also, we're upgrading the finance director, current position to an assistant city manager, administrative services director, and this will just help ensure that there's proper levels of oversights for the city's financial, accounting, HR, and risk management functions. We have technology enhancements included in the budget, and we're going to be upgrading our city website, making it really cool and easy to look at and, and scroll through, and people will be able to see what they want on the website. We'll be, we'll be completing the implementation of our financial software package. They actually implemented a new financial accounting software several years ago, but there's been a lot of changes in personnel, and the financial software was never really fully implemented. So, we're going to, we have some funding in there to actually go back and fully implement it, so that all city staff will be able to use it. And then we'll be adding some new desktops and laptops for staff. In the community grant fund, we have 204,000 that will be programmed under the new hybrid model, and this is a $10,000 increase over last year. We have some plaza investments. We'll be adding some additional bike parking, new trash recycling containers, and we have designed for a major upgrade to the restrooms in the plaza. Street maintenance, which has been a major focus of the city, and our streets are pretty, pretty well maintained, but this year, we're actually getting, getting 184,000 in new state funding for our street maintenance, which is a welcome addition. And we'll be continuing the annual slurry seal program, and also our major street rehabilit, and we'll be doing major street rehabilitation of portions of Avenue del Oro. And then we have some bridges and sidewalk investments, and we'll be doing pre-construction work on Chase and Newcombe Friar Creek Bridges. And then we'll be continuing the sidewalk, city sidewalk repair program. For water, we have some major water infrastructure investments. We'll be funding the innovative groundwater banking well project, and then construction of the West Napa Street Water Main and Services Replacement Project. And then we'll be doing a very detailed water fund analysis. We'll be updating the city's water rates, doing a really detailed water rate study, and that's going to review costs, our allocations and rates, just to ensure that we're, we're very transparent and responsible and fair to our customers, while also ensuring that we have a stable and appropriately funded water utility that present and future customers in our economy can rely on. So, there were some budget changes since the June 12 workshop, and that was, came from some of the city council recommendations, and then we went back and did a more thorough review and made some corrections, some accounting corrections. And so, some of these changes, so the changes that have been made for city council, we added $5,000 for additional training for land use planning, and in the planning department, we added an additional $5,000 so that our planning commissioners can also attend land use planning. And then we added 7,500 as a matching fund for a potential historic train district, and that is with the understanding that we will be obtaining a grant for the additional 7,500 that we'll take to fund that. For street maintenance, this was an accounting error, we just took out a double entry of the Persen funded liability. That was $76,751. In the water utility fund, we actually went back and did a, another look at of the revenues and expenditures, kind of based on actuals and what was, what we saw. And we also fixed a double entry of the Persen funded liability. And then we removed the water capital program and water connection fees and moved it to a new water capital improvement program, and that was 391,382. And then we created a new water capital improvement fund, and that's where we put all the new water capital. And we just put it over there so it'll provide greater clarity, and then that way, for our fiscal year 1819, we can actual, actually do a real CIP budget. And that, so that moved over there, and so there's an additional 3,45,800 in that fund for our water capital improvement projects. And then we, we get water connection fees there as revenue. And we have 100,000 in a COPHS grant. We've actually had this in the past, but it was going into the general fund, and we just created a new fund and, and put the funds over there, so it sits in the fund, and then we have a transfer out of that, of 100,000. There was a small correction on the transfers of debt service for the clean renewable energy bond, and that was about $4,000. And then in the successor agency, there was an addition of 1,450,000 when we received final approval of that, of a housing bond expenditure agreement for affordable housing. So, finally, we're just recommending that the city council take the following actions and approve the budget of the city of Sonoma and the Sonoma Successor Agency with an operating budget of, total operating budget of 33,328,075, and a capital improvement budget of 3,618,700. And this includes a general fund budget of 17,509,088. And finally, approve a separate resolution, a personnel resolution, that adds an accounting manager and upgrades the finance director to an assistant city manager administrative services director, including the approval of salary ranges and job descriptions. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I just have one question. We never discussed reserves, reserve accounts.
So, within your budget, there's also, we did talk about at the last, at the workshop, we had a slide that had a summary about reserves, and one item we have created is in your financial summary section of your budget, there are, some areas have been added. There's breakdown about revenue.
Is this the newest report, or what we had last?
This is new. So, there is a, we did talk about reserves last, last week as well.
Is it in the PDF, or is it in the?
It's in the PDF, so.
So, I think you have to click on the, the link on the?
Yeah, if you go, if you go onto your iPad, go to the staff report.
The what?
Okay. So, if you go to, if you?
We don't have a paper copy.
It's not, it's, no, it's not, it's not part of your, it's not part of your paper copy. Those were, if those were changes, the printed copies were changes just to the budget detail. Then, within the actual staff report for the budget, at the bottom, there's a series of links to the document, and the full document, the full budget document is there, and there is a, an item called financial summary. Within that financial summary is a breakdown that shows what our current reserve policy is, completely written within the document, which that's not been done before for council. And then there is also a chart that shows what the council's current reserve fund is, and what you have committed, and what remains outstanding. So, currently, it's about, have you finding?
No.
So, if you go on the, on the agenda summary for the budget, and you click? So if you go on the, on the agenda summary for the budget, and you click on that agenda staff report, or the agenda summary. That's the second page has the full budget listed there.
And what page?
So go this, if you, there's a section called financial summary.
It all says financial summary.
It's broken into different sections. If you go to the very last page of that financial summary, Councilman Aggermonte.
Okay. I'm done. I can't.
Well, let me just, let me briefly say, what's, so within the budget reserve, council currently has about 7.6 million in, in reserves, of which you have a policy of 17% is re, is put in emergency reserve. There's another one and a half million that is put in just an operating reserve. And then you've made a variety of programmatic directions to council that are also delineated on that chart. I apologize, I don't have that in front of me. We're going to come back in a month to you with an update of the entire reserve policy to make, and to also ensure that we are compliant with GASB. I'm sorry you're all looking along. I don't have.
Is this the same document that we have in our binders? Or is this a wholly different document?
There was a new section, there was a new section, just a financial summary. It just describes the revenues and expenditures, so it's kind of the whole level up of that.
It's a new 139-page document?
No, 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 no. No, no. The only thing that is, the financial summary is the, is a section that just describes a revenue, it describes the expenditures. It's just as a, kind of an overview. And then there is also this, the budget reserve. You saw all the numbers in this, you saw before.
But is this entire 139-page document new?
No, 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 no. It is not new. You saw all the budget detail before. You saw the pie charts. You saw the reserve fund. You saw all of that last Monday. We now have just put it within kind of one document and put it all together.
Yeah, why don't we?
Can we take a five-minute break? Be happy to show you on your screens. That'd be great.
Thank you. Sorry. What did you say, page 40? Did you say that, page 40 in here?
49.
51 misses a full chart.
Stupid.
I haven't, totally. What I've heard her saying is missing the same data in the format.
Go to page 51.
So council, when we met last Monday, we provided you with pie charts, tables, spreadsheets, and we showed you all the information. What we had not had time to do was to put it all in a nice narrative and, and kind of, some people, it's better for them to read narrative than look at charts. What we've done now is we've put all that information into a financial summary narrative. The information, the, the pie charts themselves, the numbers are the same. They're just now a narrative description to make it easier for members of the public going forward to read this. In addition, the council does have a reserve policy that was last updated in 2006. I know this was on your council goals for a number of years. We are going to be bringing it forward within the next month, and we will update not only the policy, but we'll look at some of the parameters and see if there's things you want to make, any changes you want to make to that. So the, what we showed you on Monday was a breakdown that showed you the reserves. And this right here is what was shown on to you last Monday, and now it has been just put within the document along with the current council policy. So this is the terms of reserve policy. This is what we have that the council approved. Again, it's been over 10 years, but it is current policy. I apologize for the confusion. It was, we were trying to put together some more background information, which is typically here for someone who picks up the budget after the fact, and they can read through a narrative and understand. And that's what the purpose of the financial summary was. We were unable to get that done before last Monday, but we did want to include it within this piece, and I apologize if that wasn't clear and could have done a better job communicating that to you. So this reserve policy here basically is what, our understanding of what commitments council has made with its reserves so far, within some of the language that the government accounting standards boards requires, and where we need to come back and make some updates. And so we'll be coming back to you in the month of July and have a conversation about the reserve policy and what we want to have in here.
Thank you very much. Any questions, further questions? Are we on questions yet? Seeing none, I'm going to take it.
I have a question.
Councilperson.
I'm just looking at the document, which was page 31 of the document from the budget workshop. And that document had, let me see, it had, the current document has $100,000 reserved for the Broadway Affordable Housing Project, and that was not, that is not shown on here. We're, oh, it's in?
It's under a sign on the?
No, well, she's looking at?
On the document?
The PowerPoint from the budget workshop.
Right. I apologize. So it was not on that, and it was not on that piece, and that was an item that was we, after the effect, after the fact, the conversation was actually brought to my attention. This was something that was not my attention, that the council had taken that 100,000 and reserved that through a resolution. So we then updated that to include that here because council had taken that action prior. You know, part of, I think, where we are as an organization, your past city manager was the finance director and had been the finance manager. And then your finance director also, also left kind of at the same time. So there's a level of institutional knowledge that walked out the door. And that happens sometimes in organizations. And so what we're doing now is going back through, we'll be reviewing, and we're updating. So that was an update to put back in and to clarify. And if we find other items, for example, if there are other, we'll go back, we are going to be going back through and doing some queries to see if there's anything else that's been reserved. There are a few, there are some other, as we look at our fund balance, there are a variety of small funds that have been set aside through the years, some of which we're going to have to do some research on. So for example, the splash, the Sonoma Splash, there is 250,000 set aside, not in this reserve and a separate special fund, that, all of those special funds need to come back to council and be clarified, and some of them probably should be rolled back into here maybe. There's a lot of kind of just review that we need to do on various funds, and that's part of the work that we'll do over the next month or so and bring that back to you.
I just have a more simple question was, and I, I am not trying to be, you know, aggressive about it, but you just said the documents were identical, and they're the exact same documents that we received last time, and they're not. So are there other changes?
I don't, we tried really hard. The document, I do not believe there's any other major changes. The, the very, the budget item that we had, the spreadsheet within the staff report, the supplemental, which tracked all the changes, that was our attempt, and we missed one here, obviously, to track any change that we made that was not something that we brought to you before. I apologize. This was something that came not, came through kind of a separate venue through our planning director and should have been on that list. But we, we worked really hard to try to capture any changes, so I, you know, could be clear with you that what was here.
Any further questions from the council? All right. I will take it out to the public for public comment. Any public comment on this issue? I'm looking at you.
Thank you. Chris Petlock, 426 Napier Road. I want to concur with what the city manager was saying. There's nothing more difficult for an organization than to have so much institutional knowledge walk out the door, especially in the accounting and finance department. Accounting and finance, anybody who's ever taken a class will know that that is the language of business, and regardless if it's government or not, that's, that's basically everything walking out. So it is a very difficult position. The only thing I would really say is that, you know, it's a lot of hard work to get through this. You know, I would really encourage council to take a monthly treasurer's report so you can get used to these numbers, you can see them regularly, you can see what's happening, and you understand them, you're not looking at them once a year going, what is this? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for further discussion and some actions.
So I, may I, Madam Mayor, start off? So I'm disappointed, of course, by the funding, lack of funding for the cemetery. It's something that's very important, and so I'm just disappointed that. And in the alternative actions, is there anything that can be done with respect to that stipend? I think it was $25,000 or, I forget the amount, to do, to update the study that was done or find another place, another company that can do this study with respect to the cemetery?
So council, the council set a variety of goals, and that we have not put kind of meat on. And one of the goals is financial sustainability. So staff is going to be coming back with specific strategic initiatives underneath financial sustainability. I believe that one of the areas that will be under that, that I will be recommending, is a cemetery. So we talked about this during the retreat, and under financial sustainability, it needs to be something broad as develop a, develop a plan moving forward if we need to update the study. And as we bring that council goals back, and my plan is to bring that by the end of summer, there will be some things we may need to add some money to because you have not approved, fully approved your goals. You've given us broad direction, but there will be some changes. And if at that point, council wants to, and if you recall, I set aside $100,000 for financial sustainability out of reserves, and we've already only programmed 75,000. So if, as we look at all the rest of the strategic initiatives that we want to do on financial sustainability, and in the next year, if one of the things council wants to tackle is looking at the cemetery, then there is funding available in what you've set aside in reserves in order to do that. It's just that part of I want, what I want to do is to bring the full, the rest of the kind of the strategic initiatives that will come underneath those council goals. And then I anticipate Councilmember Aggermonte that there could be some additional changes and some additional investment. So just the timing of council, a new council, council doing their, and council doing their goals, they, they don't line up well this year to have all that information in the budget ahead of time. And so we can do kind of a catch-up that can occur.
Are you done, Councilwoman Aggermonte? No, it's okay. I'm going to support the budget. I recognize it's a tremendous amount of work, and I don't, I just have one comment. I don't, I recognize that we have a contract with the Visitors Bureau, but I don't think the expenditure of $100,000 to the Visitors Bureau is appropriate at this time, and I'm going to request at a later time that that contract be considered again, whether it's appropriate or not. I looked at the 990s for the Visitors Bureau. It looks like they're getting approximately $700,000 from the TID currently for their budget. The idea behind the TID was that we would no longer have to fund the Visitors Bureau out of the general fund due to the loss of redevelopment money. The amount we were, that they were receiving from redevelopment in 2012 was $200,000, and now they are receiving $700,000 from the TID. I think that we could use the $100,000 for measures that are also important to the city, like the cemetery, for example. We could have $100,000 on that project. I think that would be wonderful. I don't think the Visitors Bureau will be at a loss for doing their work. We recognize and appreciate their work. It's great. But in reviewing their 990s, it appears that they have a $1.1 million budget. I understand that they rent the Carnegie Library for almost nothing, and so we are supporting them in many, many ways, which is great. You know, we're supportive of our tourism industry here, but that $100,000 I think should be used for other purposes, and we do have a tight budget, and I hope that we consider in the near future terminating that contract. And I did review the contract this afternoon, and it can be terminated at our discretion, and I think we should do that. Well, I'll just throw in a couple comments of the changes since the workshop. I was really happy to see the increase in training funds and also the $75,000 to match the historic train district, even though that's not going to happen for a while, at least. What's that?
You said 75,000.
Okay, 7,500, not 1,000. And, yeah, and I think that this budget paves the way to doing a lot of the things that we talked about at our strategic planning session, and I look forward to seeing all of that fleshed out in detail. Yeah?
I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that staff did on this and the comments made about when the institutional knowledge walks out the door. I completely understand that, and so I appreciate the new bodies coming in to, to make it work. So thank you.
We have a motion.
Yeah, and I will just kind of add to what Councilmember Harrington said. I would be supportive to look at that in the future because I think the TID has moved, it was 400,000 when it was at the beginning, and now it's 700,000. And I know that there's, there's projects that whenever somebody talks about money that we could use, they always talk about the TID. But understanding how the TID is set up and, and all that, probably looking at that, I would, I would be in support of that. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion of a resolution of the city of Sonoma and the successor agency of the former Sonoma Community Development Agency adopting the operating capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and waiving the annual allocation equal to one quarter of 1% of the budget, general fund expenditures to public art fund for the fiscal year 2017, 18.
I'll second.
All right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
No, and I'd like to make a quick comment. My no vote in no way reflects this on the city manager's staff. A lot of effort and time went into the preparation of the operating and capital budget. I really am doing a no vote because of the reserves, how we had to go through this tonight, looking for this. And I've been talking about this for almost two and a half years, and tonight is my night of protest.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there is a second resolution on page 11 of our agenda report. You got it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma authorizing additional, authorizing addition of an accounting manager position and elimination of the finance director personnel allocation to replace, be replaced with assistant city manager slash administrative service director, including salary ranges and job descriptions as part of the fiscal year 17, 18 city budget.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
No, I support this, but as I said, tonight's vote is a protest vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Henley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Those are both 4-1. For everything, not just a fee. For everything, not just appeals? All right. All right. We should add it to the annotated agenda. Well done. Item seven, council member reports and comments. Anybody? Councilmember Cook?
You know, I'll just mention really quick that I had the GSA meeting earlier in June, and I just want to thank Dan. I know that Dan Tagasuki, our public works director, this is his last meeting with us. I just want to thank him for doing what staff, whenever you're in a meeting and they say staff is taking care of things, they're talking about individuals like Dan, so I want to thank you. And our next GSA meeting will be in April, or August.
Anybody else? Item eight, city manager comments and announcements.
Nothing at this point, thank you.
Thank you. And we're adjourned. Well done, guys. Well done.